I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. P. I'd ask if we could call the roll, please.
Georgia Holmes.
Present.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Arlene Kane.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Carol Anne Swartzenbach.
Here.
Skyler Wetzel.
Here.
And would like to welcome Skyler back. I think, just an editorial comment here, the reason it is so cold this week is because every time that we've called Skyler to report in, I ask her what the temperature is. It's seven, 71. And so, Skyler.
Welcome back to class.
Just to remind her of what South Dakota's like.
She also has a sun tipp.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I, with those editorial comments made, I'd like to go ahead and accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. And again, I remind all council members that if there is any item on the agenda tonight that is in a conflict of interest, please make that known publicly prior to voting. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You also have in your packages the minutes from the February 5th council meeting. Should have had a chance to review those. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes on February 5th.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the February 5th council meeting. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You have also before you claims, Item A bills in between of $109,510.68. I'd accept a motion to approve those bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $109,510.68.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You also have in your packages the current claims of $39,598.90 and $73.00 and a 2017 accounts payable claims of $6,967.86. I'd accept a motion to approve those current claims and accounts payable claims.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve the current claims of $39,598.73 and $73.00 and 2017 accounts payable claims of $6,967.86.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those current claims and accounts payable claims. Are there any comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any communications from the public? Hearing none. We do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:10. We also have an executive session on the agenda. I would like to, not go into executive session prior to the public hearing. So if we could just go through the administrative committee reports as far as we can get on public hearing time, if that would be agreeable to everyone. Carol Anne, administrative and finance.
We'll meet March 5th. It's Monday before the council meeting at 1:00 PM at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Airport advisory committee, Georgia.
There was no meeting, but our next meeting will be this coming Friday at 8:00. He is busy plowing and he's putting a lot of hours in doing that right now, so.
Okay. Thank you. Custer Falls River Waste Management District, Ron.
Next meeting will be 8th of March at Millers Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Anne.
We'll meet Wednesday, March 7th at the end of July.
Okay. Evans Point Advisory Committee, Skyler.
We did meet. We talked about the decluded projects during the closure, which include the ladies locker room floor, the upstairs carpet, and some paint removal. We're also working on a vision agreement, and our next meeting will be March 50.
Okay, thank you. Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Marty.
Next meeting is Monday, March 5th at 3:00 PM here at the M. H.
Okay. Planning and zoning commission, Arlene.
Tomorrow night's meeting won't be held, and the next meeting will be March 21st at 7:00 PM.
Public Safety, Bob.
Our public safety meeting is tomorrow at City Hall at 2:00.
Okay. And Public Works.
This is pressure. Never say anything. Public Works. May on February 13th, the American Audi, Ken, Tracy, and myself were there. The rush pile, the proposal is almost complete on that. Doran Road, still two easements that are necessary for rerouting Doran Road. The expected costs are $40 each easement and an additional $1,200 for marketing around to the water tank. The cantilever sidewalk, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology has been working with the South Dakota Department of Transportation and the Army Corps of Engineers on the design cantilever sidewalk. The street light on Baileyview Road, Billy worked with Black Hills Energy to get that light installed. Be no cost for the installation. Expected utility cost increased by $13 a night. Public Works approved installing that light for increased safety. I may pull this off. New business items, separate request for proposals for the city's lots of the old water field station and the city armory for construction of workforce housing are almost complete. And I'd like to extend a thank you to the city crews, all the folks that have been pitching in to get the snow taken care of. I've heard both sides of the discussion before, the blocking driveways, and there's other people who have said the city's responsibility is to clear streets, not the sidewalks. You're always going to have the pros and cons. I think the folks are doing a great job considering the snow that happened last week and a half. I'd like to personally thank them for the hard work they've been doing. The next public works meeting will be February 27th at 2:00 at City Hall.
Thank you. Southern Hills Economic Development, Georgia, and I may have to interrupt you.
Real quick, we have a board meeting on Friday, the 15th of February. In April, there's a convention over the plan for historical preservation restoration of historical buildings, and there'll be some activities and stuff that'll be going on there. I don't have a exact date on it, but April. Back of energy is pirating the natural gas location of the city, and then alternative housing is still being explored in the next year, which is March 12th.
Okay, thank you. And Marty, did you have any comments? Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory, Skyler.
Our next meeting will be April 9th.
Okay. And Ron, Volunteer Fire Department.
That, 13th of February, Hospital Volunteer Fire Department. Ready to deploy, update the bylaws if and where needed for the operation in the department. 27th, 28th of March, we have a refresher training, refresher training on firefighting safety. Comment was made that with the recent damage note, the fire hydrants can become difficult to find and access, perhaps some public education on it. And next meeting will be 13th of March.
Okay, thank you. You finished right on time. We will, at this time, I've called for more of the hearing, public hearing. What we're dealing with is hanging JLLC, doing business as Red Rock River Resort, has an application for retail wine license to be used at 603 North River Street. This is a public hearing at this time. Are there any comments as to why this application for the license should be denied or should Hearing none. Council, do you have any comments, questions concerning this application? Hearing none. Go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would accept a motion to approve the application for retail wine license to be used at 603 North River Street for Red Rock River Resort.
I'm going to motion to approve the license application for the retail wine license to be used at 603 North River Street.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this application for a wine license. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd accept a motion to go into executive session for personnel and legal.
Motion to go into executive session for personnel.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Adjourn to executive session at 7:12. Okay, moving on to Item B. We've got a first reading of Ordinance 1185, establishing a residential tax rebate. You have that ordinance written in your package. Again, I remind you, the purpose of this is to stimulate workforce housing in particular within Hot Springs, both in the area of remodeling, improving existing properties, along with stimulating new growth in building here in Hot Springs. I'd accept a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance 1185.
I'll make a motion to accept the reading, first reading for Ordinance 1185 to establish residential tax rebate.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to establish residential tax rebate for the city of Hot Springs. Is there any discussion?
I have some questions. Ken's aware of these questions. It's something I don't know. Bob talked to me about today, the first page, it's a form. You haven't seen the form that you're going to use. I think that's something we need to see. And on the second page, second paragraph, redevelopment neighborhoods, one of the areas is concerned detriment of public health, safety, morals. I asked her if she could please find where morals fits in this and why that's there. I'm sure it's supposed to be, but I don't really understand it. Bob talked to me. Also, you have the last paragraph on the second page, all residential real property located with the boundaries of the city of Hot Springs. Where everything's going to qualify as this redevelopment neighborhood. I just want to be reassured it's not going to affect our property values since it says that they are aged, deteriorated, obsolete, obsolescence, and dilapidations injurously affect the area to the detriment of public health, safety, morals, and welfare.
Whenever we went through this process of drafting this, initially it started out as a discretionary tax through the county. In doing so, we went through extensive meetings with the county assessor. And Suzie knows all the requirements because she's required by law. She actually functions as a, no, I'm sorry, Suzie's a therapist. And she often acts as an agent for the state, making sure that the tax laws are upheld and followed through on real estate properties. She was the one that told me about the sections where we had to create the development neighborhoods in order to put in the tax to allow them to have any kind of discretionary tax. And she, at that point, had told us that it would not have any kind of an effect on assessments or taxes based on what she knew just by saying that they were in the development neighborhood. The only other way that we could do that without having it in one of these development neighborhoods, which were defined with these odd descriptions, which kind of makes it sound like it's New York Slum or something like that, is we would have to specifically pick out places that didn't fly. And that became too cumbersome. We felt that it was an opportunity that every homeowner in the boundaries of Hot Springs had the right to participate in, and that's why we looked at it. It's an unfortunate language. I will find out where the safety morals and welfare came from. I don't know that exactly, but I'll put that up for you.
Is that attorney?
Just today?
That's just today?
Yeah.
We need to be someone to look at any ordinance. We're, we're going to pass the first ordinance, but there are a lot of questions about that. And I'm not against it. I think it's a good idea. I just want to do a lot.
Okay, any other comments, discussion?
I'll add to it. Kim and I did talk today, raising some questions about the language and how it might be perceived by the public. So if this description of redevelopment neighborhood, if the language isn't specified by state law, to somehow tell existing folks that aren't obsolete, aren't dilapidated, don't have health, safety, morals, and welfare issues, that for areas that might have, just reassure the public that we're not saying that by the whole city being classified redevelopment area, that we view these things existing in all situations. It'd be nice to know if this is in fact specific language that's required by the state, or if this could somehow be modified by the city, with a lot more property in the city against these definitions. The other thing we had talked about is structures that qualify for the discretionary rebate, and specifically new porch is greater than 200 square feet. What's significant about the square footage? Does that come from a building permit, a building permit's needed, and?
Whenever that was discussed as part of what goes in and goes out, the only, one of the requirements to be able to participate in this rebate process is that the project has to be approved ahead of time by the city, and it has to go through the assessor's office to determine that it needs a certain, and these are state requirements for increasing assessments. And so, the 200 square foot is a minimum requirement for a building code. If you're building a porch that's less than 200 square feet, you don't have to get a permit for that. However, it also is a threshold within the state taxation assessment processes that clicks it into that if you build something that's greater than 200 square feet, you would get an increase in taxes for that activity. Those are the kind of things that she's going to be looking at on determining whether or not something can participate in, that there would be actually taxes to rebate. The whole process of this is if you have even a house that you're putting an addition on, and the addition you paid $30,000 for, but it increases the value of your home by $40,000, your assessed value would then be that taxation on the $40,000, not the actual dollars that you spent. Conversely, if you built something that was less than 200 square feet and you spent $10,000 on it, from their standpoint, that wouldn't increase the value of your home of any significant amount, and therefore wouldn't necessarily be a participant in the process. That's why Suzie and how the assessors look at actually assessing value has such a large part to do with this process.
So to clarify, the waiver or the rebate will be on the increased value, not the total amount unless it was a grand construction. So if they build a 200 square foot porch, that increase their value by $15,000, and the rebate would be on the tax on that $15,000.
Correct. And then we still maintain the base tax. So if your home is valued at $100,000 and you're taxed so much today, you add a $50,000 addition to it, with this rebate, you will only pay the taxes on that $100,000. You will not lose any money that we will attach. Yeah, go ahead.
Any other questions, comments? Again, you know, I think we're looking for a way to stimulate workforce housing and also hopefully to improve some, I mean, just to be blunt, frank, and honest that our, in our community, we've been allowed to be here in this neighborhood, and incentive to make those livable and attractive each year, every week.
Can we get this, though, cleaned up a little bit?
Absolutely.
An attorney will get it, and then bring you back for a second. We may have to have another first reading if there are significant changes to it.
Right. But I would like to, I think that I'd like to go ahead and give you an idea, if that's your desire. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance 1185, approving the first reading, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that will be under the understanding that you will have a legal review, hard to second read, and clarify these questions that have been brought up tonight. Good discussion. Looking, okay, go ahead.
Ms. P. have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we do roll, hold, scroll, and this sounded like everybody was in favor, but just to clarify?
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. P., you're right. Let's redo that in a proper way. Ms. P., would you call the roll, please?
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Arlene Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Skyler Wetzel?
Yes.
Okay, great. We hope to have some new homes, or some new lots. New business, Item A. Possible motion and discussion to approve the 2018 donation gift acceptance policy. You see that in your packages. There's extensive verbiage that has been changed to cover the donation of memorial tree and benches, just to ensure that we have a standard policy of what those donations would entail. Again, you have that package in front of you. I would accept a motion to approve the donation gift acceptance policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 donation gift.
By saying that they were in the developer neighborhood. The only other way that we could do that without having it in one of these development neighborhoods which were defined with these odd descriptions, which kind of makes it sound like it's New York Slum or something like that, is we would have to specifically pick out places that didn't buy. And that became too cumbersome. We felt that it was an opportunity that every homeowner in the boundaries of Hot Springs had the right to participate in, and that's why we looked at it. It's an unfortunate language. I will find out where the safety morals or welfare came from. I don't know that exactly, but I'll put that up for you.
Is that attorney?
Just today?
That's just today?
Yeah.
We need to be someone to look at any ordinance. What's your opinion?
I can review this.
So, I mean, we passed, you know, we were going to pass the first ordinance, but there are a lot of questions about that. And I'm not against it. I think it's a good idea. I just want to do a lot of things.
Okay, any other comments, discussion?
I'll add to it. Kim and I did talk today raising some questions about the language and how it might be perceived by the public. So if this description of redevelopment neighborhood, if the language isn't specified by state law, to somehow tell existing folks that aren't obsolete, aren't dilapidated, don't have health safety morals, welfare issues, that for areas that might have it, just reassure the public that we're not saying by the whole city being classified redevelopment area that we view these things existing in all situations. It'd be nice to know if this is in fact specific language that's required by the state or if this could somehow be modified by the city. A lot more camaraderie in the city against these definitions. The other thing we had talked about is structures that qualify for the discretionary rebate and specifically new porches greater than 200 square feet. What's significant about the square footage? Does that come from a building permit, a building permits needed, and?
Whenever that was discussed as part of what goes in and goes out, the only, one of the requirements to be able to participate in this rebate process is that the project has to be approved ahead of time by the city and it has to go through the assessor's office to determine that it needs a certain, and these are state requirements for increasing assessments. And so the 200 square foot is a minimum requirement for a building code. If you're building a porch that's less than 200 square feet, you don't have to get a permit for that. However, it also is a threshold within the state taxation assessment processes that clicks it into that if you built something that's greater than 200 square feet, you would get an increase in taxes for that activity. Those are the kind of things that she's going to be looking at on determining whether or not something can participate and that there would be actually taxes to rebate. The whole process of this is if you have even a house that you're putting an addition on, and the addition you paid $30,000 for, but it increases the value of your home by 40,000, your assessed value would then be that taxation on the 40,000, not the actual dollars that you spent. Conversely, if you built something that was less than 200 square feet and you spent $10,000 on it, from their standpoint, that wouldn't increase the value of your home of any significant amount and therefore wouldn't necessarily be a participant in the process. That's why Suzie and how the assessors look at actually assessing value has such a large part to do with this process.
So to clarify, the waiver or the rebate will be on the increased value, not the total amount unless it was a current construction.
Exactly.
So if they did build a 200 square foot porch, that increased their value by 15,000, then the rebate would be on the tax on that 15,000.
Correct. Only. And then we still maintain the base tax. So if your home is valued at $100,000 and you're taxed so much today, you add a $50,000 addition to it, with this rebate, you will only pay the taxes on that $100,000. You will not use any money that we will attach. Yeah, go ahead.
Any other questions, comments? Again, you know, I think we're looking for a way to stimulate workforce housing and also hopefully to improve some, I mean, just to be blunt, frank, and honest that our citizens in our community have been allowed to be here in this neighborhood and incentive to make those livable and attractive each year moving.
Can we get this both cleaned up a little bit?
Absolutely.
An attorney will get it and then bring you back for a second. We may have to have another first reading if there are significant changes to it.
Right. But I would like to, I think that, I'd like to go ahead and give you an idea if that's, you know, your desire. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 1185 approving the first reading? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that will be under the understanding that you will have a legal review, hard to the second reading, and to clarify these questions that have been brought up tonight. Good discussion. Looking, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Nocroft?
Do we do roll call votes, please? It sounded like everybody was in favor, but just to clarify.
Okay, I'm sorry, Misty, you're right. Let's redo that in a proper way. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
I think I'll go with no. We'll get it cleaned up.
Garry Wettzel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item D. We've got a first reading of ordinance 1186. This is an ordinance transferring six lots from rural to urban. This is in the Act 9 edition. Those lots have been purchased by a developer, Act 9, the golf course, and we will be transferring those six lots from rural to urban.
I'll make a motion that we have the first reading for ordinance 1186 for an ordinance transferring six lots from rural to urban. I'll second you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 1186 transferring six lots from rural to urban. Again, you have that, a copy of that in your folder? Are there any discussion? Hearing none. Misty, I ask that you call the roll, please.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Garry Wettzel?
Yes.
Okay, great. We hope to have some new homes or some new lots. New business, item A. Possible motion and discussion to approve the 2018 donation gift acceptance policy. You see that in your packages. There's extensive verbiage that has been changed to cover the donation of memorial tree and benches, just to ensure that we have a standard policy of what those donations would entail. Again, you have that package in front of you. I would accept a motion to approve the donation gift acceptance policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 donation gift acceptance policy.
It's been moved and seconded. We accept that policy as erected in your packages. Are there any discussion?
I have one question. Number four on the last page, page five. Conditions will include information on where a donor can purchase and deliver a grade upon donation.
What paragraph? I can't hear you, Georgia.
On paragraph four, on page five, the last page. Conditions will include information on where a donor can purchase and deliver a grade upon donated items. It says, I mean, I'm confused that it says they have to give them permission to where it purchases.
If people are interested in finding a bench that fits the policy, my understanding that we would be giving them the information of where they can purchase that.
Because we don't just say, okay, who's?
No, we don't dictate their.
Certain amount of money's a bench, or whatever.
The idea behind that, and we have a couple of different places they can come from, but that we want them to maintain the same appearance, be on the same design and structures, those that we currently have, so we're not having a number of different types of benches. So there are a couple of different options that you'll see already if you walk up and down the Freedoms Trail or go into our parks and stuff. But we want of a composite material, you know, doesn't need resanded or refinished or stained each year. So they will have an option of where they can purchase them. I will give them a couple of suggestions of where the ones we currently have.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. Page six, section nine, paragraph two. Talks about the minimum designated donation of $250 is required. It goes on to talk about the city's required draft publishing of growth supplemental appropriation, which creates an expense to the city. Out of the $250 that someone is giving to the city thinking, you know, that's going to be put to use, any idea of how much of that $250 is actually going to be put to use?
That would be only for designated donations, so that's if I wanted to buy a tree. I wanted to donate money to buy a tree instead of buy the tree myself and donate it to the city. And if you're asking how much of that would be, all the full donation. They get to designate what the purpose of it is for. We're asking for at least $250 if they're designating. Doesn't mean that they can't give a $50 donation, but if they say it's going to be spent for something specifically, then that money needs to be appropriated and be spent for that purpose. And all of that money will go towards their designated donation so long as it's accepted by the full council and city administrator.
I guess my question is if they think $250 is going to purchase their designated donation and the city's taking some of that money for publishing and everything?
We're not taking some of it. We're saying if you want to designate, it has to be at least that much because we'll have an added expense. So we're not taking that expense out of the donation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to authorize finance officer to pay down the Boulder Falls Rural Development Bond issued principal by $90,000. That revenue was received in the early payoff for the assessment to the paving out of Boulder Falls. I'd accept a motion at this time to authorize our finance officer to pay that money down.
I'll make a motion to authorize finance officer to pay down Boulder Falls Rural Development Bond issued principal of by $90,000 and the revenue received from our early payoff.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We authorize finance officer to pay down that bond. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have item C, possible motion and discussion to agree to the proposed changes in the 2018 barnyard veterinary cleaning fees. As you know, earlier in the year, we approved our contract with Barnyard. At that time, we did not have their new fee structure. We are asking for approval to adopt that new fee structure. I believe you have that, a copy of that. Misty, I think some of those fees went up just slightly and one went down, so I'd love to see if you could maybe touch on that.
Fees, boarding fees, all went up by $2 each. And the utilization or disposal fee, where it used to be a flat rate of $78.65, is now restructured based on the size of the animal. Last year, the only utilization fees we paid were for cats. And a cat greater than 25 pounds is very uncommon, and so as opposed to $78.65 will now be paying a $0.36 fee for.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Can I make the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself there.
I move to agree to the proposed changes in the 2018 barnyard veterinary cleaning fees.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and then we adopt those proposed changes. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to request and receive proposals for haying at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport to be opened on March 5th at 7:10 p.m. at the regularly scheduled council meeting. As you know, typically, we do go out for some additional income at the airport to make crop harvested out there. And it also serves a purpose of alleviating the bird hazard that comes with having high grass around an airport.
I'll make a motion to put a request for and receive proposals for haying at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport to be opened on March 5th at 7:10 p.m. at the regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do receive proposals for haying at the March 5th meeting at 7:10 p.m. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, we have a possible motion and discussion to authorize the city administrator to meet with Pete Lane and son to discuss possible addendum to the existing mining contract. I'd accept a motion at this time.
I move to authorize the city administrator to meet with Pete Lane and son to discuss possible addendum to the existing mining contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do allow our city administrator to meet with Pete Lane on this subject. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I just think she would meet with him, make discussions, and then bring her findings back to the council.
That's perfect, absolutely. Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, we have a possible motion and discussion to set a public hearing on the 19th of March at 7:30 p.m. to act on the application for a temporary alcoholic beverage license from Woolies Western Grill for the Mammoth Site Casino Night. That's one of their big fundraisers, and that will be held at the Mammoth Site on the April 27th of this year. I'd accept a motion at this time to set that public hearing.
I'd make a motion to set a public hearing on March 19th, 2018, at 7:10 p.m. to act on the application for temporary alcohol beverage license, application from Woolies Western Grill for the Mammoth Site Casino Night, held at Mammoth Site on April 27th.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept that, set that public hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposing.
Okay, we have one extension. Motion carries. We have, again, item G, a possible motion and discussion to approve the travel request from Mike Close, chief of police, to attend the 2018 Police Chiefs Association Spring Conference that'll be held on April 17 through the 19th in Deadwood, South Dakota. Accept a motion to approve that travel request.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel request from Mike Close, chief of police, to attend the 2018 Police Chiefs Association Spring Conference, April 17 through 19, in Deadwood, South Dakota.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that travel request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have in your package a travel request from Officer Zachary Shaffer to attend the TASER Conducted Electrical Weapons Instructor Course in Huron on May 8th. I'd accept a motion to approve that travel request at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel request from Police Officer Zachary Shaffer to attend the TASER Conducted Electrical Weapons Instructor Course, May 8th, in Deadwood, South Dakota.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this travel request for Officer Shaffer. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Just you will do the online part?
Yep. I have a question. I've asked a number of questions regarding the police department, and it certainly doesn't mean that I'm looking to pick on them. I'm just looking to manage my, my concern is you don't have any number of nights of lodging requested, but it certainly looks like you're going to be staying over one night. Do you need some funding for you?
My brother lives in Huron, so it saves some money and it just takes place.
Okay. Your brother get along? That's okay?
Yeah.
He's a TASER taser.
He doesn't understand.
Is the night you're staying before or after TSA trip?
Before and after.
Were you getting any executive essentially here? Were there any other discussion concerning this travel request? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Misty, can you give us a finance officer update?
Sure. I accept this council. My brother's for their 2017 annual report, done validating receivables, completed the property tax analytical, completed the special assessments and the debt roll forwards, adding our two Boulder Falls loans to those. I'm done with the capital assets search and I've sent the information to our auditors who carry our tax asset detail listing and our depreciation. Once I get the response back from the auditors, I'll be booking that depreciation expense and backing off those capitalized assets. The Gatsby 68, which is the work paper required for accounting and financial reporting for pensions, is something that our auditors do completely, so that part's still outstanding. I started working on the revenue for our annual report today, and hopefully this was the last batch of accounts payable that you all approved for 2017. And after we post those tomorrow, I'll be working on the expenditures and plan to have the full annual report due by the first meeting of how pensions are required. An election update, the notice of vacancies will be published in our legal newspaper on the 21st and 28th. Interested individuals can begin circulating nominated petitions March 1st. Those can be obtained at City Hall or online at the Secretary of State's website. You have a month to circulate those, and the number of required signatures is available at City Hall for those interested. I've been working on the lease agreement for the golf carts. We're still a work in progress to approve that at our last council meeting, and we're working with the lenders and provider of those carts. I'll be out in March, the 8th through the 12th. While I'm out, the city administrator and the assistant finance officer will meet with our senior account manager with low well mark, who cross Blue Shield, to go over our 2018 renewal information. We did receive our Delta Dental renewal for 2018. There'll be a small increase. We see those changes effective with our main first premiums. And our city, the city of Hot Springs, and myself, will be hosting the Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association meeting in March, the 22nd, here at the Miller Center. I'm looking to show enough of our town to the Black Hills Area Finance Officers. Hopefully, some of the snow will melt and we'll have beautiful weather to show around a little bit.
Great, thank you, Misty. City Administrator, Kim?
Last week, I met with all but one of our department heads. Billy got away because of the onslaught of snow he's been dealing with. The meetings went really, really well. I think I gave a quick summary of what their five goals were for each department, but we were able to expound on that and really determine what the next steps were, if other people or departments were needing to be involved, what steps we needed to take, was council approval needed for any of them, or budgetary issues needed for any of them. So we really kind of created a map for it. Just for example, seeing Zach going to the TASER training was actually one of the, part of one of the goals for the police department. One of the things that they wanted to do was start getting their department personnel having specialties so that they create more value for themselves and for their department. Having somebody that really knows TASER work inside and out, how to look, repair them, how to know that they're functioning properly, how to use them properly, how to train other officers, and the updating stuff, only adds value to our police. Other things I've been working on, a number of RFPs for housing, BioChar, I should be finalizing those this week for final reviews. I also, one of the biggest things I've been working on in between everything else is the finalization for a marketing plan for Evans Plunge and Southern Hills Golf Course. I don't know, he probably had it somewhere, but I haven't been able to find it. An overall marketing plan for either one of those two locations has not been readily available, and I've not, I've not been able to gather anything from talking with him in the past. So I've been actually trying to work out an actual plan that I can go over with the advisory board of what we're spending the marketing money on, where it's going, trying to track what kind of a return we get for that money, and have it a little bit more of an accountant of exactly what we're doing, what direction we're going with that. So that should be hopefully ending up by the end of the month. Other things that we're working on is just a lot of easements, a lot of surveying that needs to go on. In the springs, we're getting all that ready to go. Easements for sewer lines, easements for roads, easements for water and other infrastructure. I think that pretty much sums up what's happened over the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you, Kim. I know it's a very busy time and a lot of things going on. Just a couple of things that I'd like to report on. One of the things is, you heard me talk that one of my goals or five important things that I would like to see happen is us really develop some workforce housing, and we're trying to do everything we can as a city other than to build the houses, which we can't do, to get that going. And one of the things that Kim mentioned was the request for proposals for, for housing. And I just wanted to give you, the council, just a quick update on where we're heading so that as that proposal, those proposals come, and we hope that they'll have an idea of what we're looking at. For the Canton area property, that's the old water fuel station, we're putting a proposal together to have a developer come in, tear down the old garage. They would bid a price for the land, but they'd also have to provide a site plan and a plan for the type of workforce housing that they have specified, and we specified that the houses will be built in a certain range, price range, and have certain accommodations. This will, obviously, we want to get these out as quickly as we can. Council will have the opportunity to approve. Council will have the opportunity to approve the request for proposal, and one of the stipulations will be that if that developer does not meet the confines of specifications that we've laid down as far as getting the homes built within the timeline that we specify in the city, we can't obtain the property, we'll be able to tap back so that we could get perhaps another developer to finish the job. The other is a little more complicated, and that's the armory lot. We have provided an opportunity for someone to tear that down or to let it remain, but only if it does remain, then it would be turned into some kind of workforce type housing. The complication with the armory lot, the adjoining property abuts right up to the armory, and what we specified in that request for proposal is a minimum price that the bidder would have to pay, because we know it's going to be a substantial cost if they decide to tear down the armory. We want to be able to purchase the property next to it as a part of that development so that we can run water and sewer without having equipment issue. And so we're asking for a minimum price that would cover the purchase of that adjoining property, including one a site plan, floor plans for what the developer would have plans for. We would accept things like a cluster of six thousand-foot square homes. Those are popular new construction for young people just starting out or in the workforce, or single family or duplex, or as I mentioned, if they wanted to re, redo the armory itself for residential. Again, we require the site plan and the floor plans for what they, they want, they want to do. These will be going out, hopefully, within the next week or two, and we'll have, see before you as council, we'll see what kind of interest we can develop, and hopefully we'll have some homes starting this summer. It's very important, and again, I cannot stress that enough. I got a call from the VA a week or so ago. They're concerned about not having enough workforce housing, and we look at the tenure situation that our VA is in, we don't want that to be a time breaker that causes them to rotate all operations here in Hot Springs. So we want to do everything we can to make that happen, and I think, the feeling that I get from developers and contractors in town, that there may be some interest in bidding on those, so hopefully, we'll get it back to going. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the solar proposal that you heard here a month or so ago. If you look at that proposal, it was based on a ten-year financing, which really didn't make it affect that efficient for us to invest in, because we would have had to pay a higher electrical bill for about 13 years before we started realizing some savings. We contacted the municipal league, and they put amendment through to arrange financing for municipalities for 20 years if you're making improvements on a, any of your buildings or properties. And that has passed, both the Senate and House should be signed by the governor. There was no, maybe a few more, and we feel that will go into effect the 1st of July. Hopefully, that will, we can keep the tariff prices on solar panels down so that they won't jump out of sight, but it may help us make that option very popular. And I really appreciate the South Dakota Municipal League. Took one call to Mont Taylor, and she says, yeah, I can work this. She found the sponsors. None of the sponsors were from Westwood, but they sponsored both the House and the Senate, and got that through very smoothly. We were on tap to go testify if it would have been necessary. And I also want to thank Georgia, went to the Minnesota League activities in Pierce this last week. She checked on, I think you were there the day of the pass, and so we'll give you credit for cheering that on, but I think that's an important thing that says, you know, hey, let's not put a roadblock in front of something good, and we'll try to get through it and get things fixed and do things right. So with that, I guess I'll accept the motion.
I'll see you later.
Your second?
Aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.